Can you hear us online, panel?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I will call to order the August meeting of the Manitou Springs Planning Commission to order. And I'll start with calling the roll. Commissioner Graybill.
Present.
Commissioner Latimer.
Present.
Commissioner Day.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Commissioner Rosenthal.
Present.
Commissioner Delake. Commissioner Casey.
Present.
And I'm Commissioner Delwich. And first item on the agenda would be comments on non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment on anything that's not on our agenda, now would be the time. I don't see any hands raised online, so I think we're okay. So we don't have any new business or old business. So I think we move right to other business. The first item will be the training.
Hello, everybody. I'm Deputy City Clerk Kristen Decoy. Just a minute while I get set up here. All right, so I'm here today to present on Colorado Sunshine Law and CORA. This is something that we are doing for all of our boards and commissions. Sorry, I'm currently touring all of them. I know that you guys have had some training on this before, but I hope that you at least find this fun and interesting. So Colorado Sunshine Law informs the methods by which public meetings are conducted. And the main purpose of this law is for public transparency. And we're going to be focusing in on open meetings law, which is sections 401 to 402 of state statute under Title 24, Article 6. It generally says that all meetings of three or more members of any local public body where any public business is discussed must be open to the public. So I'll highlight two criteria with that. One, that it's three or more members. And two, that public business is being discussed. And then we have essentially what a local public body is, which as a commission, of course, that includes a city planning commission. And more broadly, it says any public or private entity that has been delegated any governmental decision-making function. All right. And then as a side note, I am looking for a bit of participation from you guys throughout. If you don't feel like speaking up, you can give me like a thumbs up or a nod of the head or thumbs down, whatever feels right in the moment. So we're going to talk about what is a meeting? Do you think that a meeting could happen on Facebook, Instagram, or social media? Yeah, I see nodding heads, yes. What about on the phone? Yeah. And what about through email? Absolutely, it can happen through email. State statute defines a meeting broadly as any kind of gathering convened to discuss public business in person, by telephone, electronically, or by other means of communication. And we're going to go over four types of meetings, including open meetings, when meetings require notice, when they require minutes, and executive sessions. We'll say that all of these types can apply to one meeting. Most of the time, you're going to see those top three. So to dive in a little bit deeper into open meetings, and I have some fill-in-the-blanks here. It says, "Meetings with..." How many members? Does any of you remember that first criteria? Three, thank you. Three or more of any local public body, or a quorum, whichever is less. So I'd like to break this part down a little bit more. Does anybody want to try to explain as best they can or guess what a quorum is? Anyone, any volunteers? Gloria says 50% plus one. That would make sense, yes, because it is a majority of your board. I will say it also can be defined as the minimum number of members required to make your meeting valid. So both of those are true. And then it says at which what is discussed? Does anybody remember? That second criteria?
Public business.
Thank you, yes. And it also says at which any formal action is to be taken. All right, so when meetings require notice, a minimum of how much time? Does anybody know how much time, how far in advance agendas need to be published?
Twenty-four.
Yes, thank you, 24 hours. And that's with specific agenda information where possible. And that's required at meetings in which formal action occurs, is essentially what that first bullet point says. Or at which a majority or a quorum of the body is in attendance or expected to be in attendance. So your meetings are intentional and should be publicly noticed.
Kristen?
Yeah?
Can I ask a question? When you say posted, would it be enough to post a white sheet of paper on the door? Enough to post it on a website where somebody may or may not see it?
That's a great question. I can't remember exactly where that is. If it's either an ordinance or a resolution, and I can look that up and follow up with you guys if you want. That it has to be posted online is the primary place that we post our agendas. Now, as a secondary location and as a courtesy, we do post it at the front of City Hall here. Does that answer your question? Okay, awesome. And then when minutes are required is essentially when formal action occurs or could occur. So if you have anything on your agenda that implies that you might take action or make a motion, then you should plan on taking minutes for that meeting. All right, so to jump into executive sessions, they are a closed portion of a regular or special meeting held to discuss a limited number of matters, which we'll get over to what those are here. But first, I'll note that you cannot take any formal action during an executive session. And the specific provision authorizing the session, as well as the topic to be discussed, must be announced to the public. So there is a formal process for executive sessions. And we want to emphasize that you refer to your staff and city attorney if you think that you might need an executive session. To further highlight that formal process, I'll share that there was a municipality in Colorado, I think within the past few years, that did not enter executive session properly. And the matter was brought to the court. In that case, the judge ruled that it was not a true executive session. It was still part of the public meetings, so they had to release the recording. All right, so some topics for executive session can be property transactions, attorney conferences, negotiations, personnel matters, confidential matters under state or federal law. So that could be something like HIPAA, if that ever comes up, and documents protected under CORA. All right. And then best practices. We do recommend being transparent. If you're discussing public business and it's a scenario that doesn't trigger open meetings law, it's still, you know, in the spirit of the law to try to keep as much of that discussion in the meeting as possible. And also, it's good process so that you don't have to repeat yourself. Furthermore, we'd like to note that if you do talk about public business outside of the meeting, there's the possibility that that may get out to other members of the public by some means. On that note, I'll just say that emails concerning public duties or funds are for the most part requestable under CORA, just to kind of tie things together because they're both similarly related in terms of transparency. And then emailing best practices for open meetings. We do recommend, if you for any reason have to email the board, blind carbon copy and/or adding labels like one-way email or do not reply, so that you're avoiding that back and forth discussion that would trigger an open meeting. Does anybody know what a daisy chain is? Yeah, I see, a daisy chain? Yeah. Does anybody want to try to describe it?
Well, it'd be a situation where someone talks to one person who talks to another, who talks to another.
Yes.
And sort of like, there's also like a spoken hub type.
Yeah.
Which is a similar type of thing where one person calls everybody and basically has the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, so you're right. It's like that indirect communication from one to the next to the next. And we want to try to avoid that when it's public business because that does trigger open meetings as well. Yeah. Let's see here then. Emails not included in open meetings law are emails that do not relate to the merits or substance of pending legislations or other public business. Emails concerning scheduling and availability. And then emails for the purpose of forwarding information. Now, I want to be careful about this forwarding information one because we just talked about daisy chains, right? So I expect that that's more so going to be sending information, like packet material, to your staff liaison or chair, depending on what your process is. All right, have you guys ever used menti.com before? It's an interactive presentation app? No? All right, so I have a fun little quiz for you guys. If you'll just give me a moment, I'll get it pulled up. So you're going to go to menti.com. That's spelled M-E-N-T-I dot com. And then there will be a code for you to put in. And these are just some scenarios for you guys to try to guess the answer on based on what we've discussed so far. And the code is 76097662. The answers are anonymous, so anybody can participate if they want. All right, looks like I got four people, five in there. All right, and I have some people answering. The question says Jane is having a party for the holidays and she has invited everyone on her board. Does her event fall under open meetings law? All right, we got six out of seven answers. So the answer for this question is no. And that is because the holiday party is not for the purpose of discussing public business. Now, you may have seen in the past that we have posted something like a notice of possible quorum for an event. And that is out of caution and transparency purposes as well, but technically, it would not fall under open meetings because you're not there to discuss business. All right. Let's see, next one. It says, "Tom is discussing public business with an alternate member on his board. When another member approaches, will the discussion trigger open meetings law?" All right, we got seven out of seven yes. So of course, because your alternate member is still part of the board and they might be promoted to a voting member at any time, that is definitely going to be the answer there. All right, this one has some different scenarios for you. You can select multiple. First one is two board members discussing public business while out at lunch. Then two board members discussing public business via emails that include the entire board. Three board members discussing public funds at the office. Four board members discussing availability for their next meeting. We have four out of seven. I'll give it another few seconds here. All right, the answer is the two in the middle. So the two board members discussing public business while out at lunch, technically, for your commission, would not trigger open meetings. Does not, of course, it's not in the spirit of the law to be doing that, but technically, it would not trigger open meetings for you guys. I forgot to kind of break down a little bit more. Do you guys remember that or quorum or less in that more detailed definition? So hypothetically, if your board, for some reason, your commission, only had three members, then your quorum becomes two, right? So if your quorum becomes two, then open meetings would trigger in that case. But since you guys are in that three or more category, it does not trigger for two members discussing business. And then the last one about availability, availability discussions do not fall under open meetings. So you guys don't need to worry about talking about that. All right, and we're going to get to questions in a moment here, but I would love your guys' feedback on what you learned today or what you thought about this Sunshine Law presentation. And then we'll plan on getting to CORA in more detail in a bit. All right, so we got best practices, thank you. And a refresher, yeah, I've heard that before too, good. Best practices. Awesome, well, thank you, guys. I'm going to leave this open and I do appreciate your feedbacks. I'll save this for later as we continue to develop training. Okay, so going back to our PowerPoint here. Who has, anybody have any questions about Sunshine Law before we go to CORA? No? Okay. All right, so open records law and processes also falls under Title 24. It says that the Colorado Open Records Act, CORA, "All public records shall be opened for inspection by any person at reasonable times." And then we have a little disclaimer message that many of you have probably seen before. Under the, under CORA, "All messages sent to or from this email account may be subject to public disclosure." How many have seen that, like emailing staff before? Yeah, I see a lot of heads nodding. That, of course, has to do with CORA, that our emails are requestable. And then to get into what a public record is, I'll highlight the important parts here. "All writings made, maintained, or kept by any local government-financed entity for use in the exercise of functions required or authorized by law or administrative rule or involving their seat or expenditure of public funds. This does also include correspondence of elected officials and appointed members." Does anybody have any questions about that? No, okay. Now, there are some things not included, which is going to be work product is generally not included. That consists of deliberative materials prepared for or by elected officials. That's going to be notes, memos, and preliminary drafts. Communications not for use in performance of public functions or involving public funds. And then communications that are clearly of a personal nature. Here are some examples of records that are not public. But more importantly, I'd like to highlight that there's information redacted from CORA requests, which is personal identifiable information and correspondence not related to public business or public funds. Does, can anybody tell me who the custodian of records is? Anyone know? Yeah, Gloria said city clerk, that's correct. Also, as deputy city clerk, I do act on behalf of the city clerk as needed and help with CORA requests and other matters. And then state statute does say that the city clerk can make rules necessary for protection of records and prevention of interference with regular duties of the clerk's office related to CORA. And to kind of give you guys an overview of what our process looks like, we'll start with the policy, which is to assure prompt and equitable service. And it is to make all records available for public inspection unless such records are protected from disclosure by state or federal law, by court order, or unless disclosure of such records would be contrary to the public interest. The full policy is on the city clerk's website, if you ever want to look that out up. Also, it does not include criminal justice records that are maintained by the Manitou Springs Police Department. However, they do use the same form that we use, so you can submit a request for them or for our office on the city clerk webpage. We do have those, of course, available printed if you prefer. And they need to be submitted in writing with sufficient specificity. And then as far as records request response, I'll highlight some key points here. We do respond within three business days. Sometimes we may have to extend that time depending on how in-depth the request is, but we would respond within three days. And then we have a research and retrieval fee, $41.37 per hour. The first hour is free. And then if the request is denied, a reason will be provided to the requester in writing. And then in summary, just, I'm sure I've said this a couple of times already, but your emails and text message correspondence related to the public functions of your appointed position are requestable under CORA. So we do recommend keeping transparency in mind in your communications. All right, does anybody have any questions?
I have one, just because I've experienced this before. I want to know how you would handle it. Let's just hypothetically, someone has a CORA request and says, "Any and all materials or work products associated with acquired dwelling units."
Okay.
What would you have to give them? Accessory dwelling units, not acquired accessory. Accessory dwelling units, not acquired accessory.
So the clerk's office does receive those kinds of requests and we might refer to whatever department that is for, sometimes it is multiple departments. And we have to make a judgment call depending on the request that's coming in. Any and all, of course, is pretty broad. So we might try to get them to narrow that down for more specificity because depending on what comes after any and all, we might have to, you know, there might not be a folder for that with how we store our records. So the more specific the requester can be, the better chance we have at finding what it is they're looking for. So it is a judgment call depending on the specific request. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does, particularly what you would, how your response would be. Because I've had experience in other places where people do this just to keep the city clerk's office busy with other things. So is there a point at which you say, we're not able to fulfill your request and then maybe it doesn't happen here?
We do, we do want to respond to those requests if we have records relevant. If, if they're not more specific, we'll, we'll do the best that we can with what information we've been given. So sometimes we might be narrowing it down by timeframe, for example. Now, as far as trying to keep us busy, we only will take the information that we have. And then depending on how long we think the work for that is going to take, we will come up with an estimate for costs for research and retrieval. And usually, we won't do the work until we receive the deposit, that's when we resume work. So only that first hour is free. Yeah, question.
Under policy, back a couple. You, it says that unless disclosure of such records would be contrary to the public interest. First off, if you could explain how that's possible. And secondly, who decides that?
That's a great question. I contrary to the public interest. I think that there are some more specifics under the law that might explain that further. I might actually refer to our city clerk on that one. One example I could think of, another clerk from another municipality. I think they had said they received a request for blueprints to a jewelry store in town. And I think they determined that that was like a trade secret and protected under Cora. Yeah, and even maybe your city attorney might be able to speak to that a little more specifically. But I can certainly get more information on that and follow up with you.
I couldn't think of a reason that it wouldn't be disclosed, but you gave me one there, so.
Okay.
I understand.
Cool. Anyone else?
Are Cora requests confidential?
The requests themselves are not, the requests are requestable, actually.
Say that again?
So, so if you're talking about the request itself, like the form that gets turned in, that's requestable. So they're not confidential.
Okay. And then the city has files on a lot of individual properties. Do those require a Cora request to access?
Yeah, if it's not readily accessible on our website, then the public record has to be requested through Cora. Anyone else? No? Okay, well, thank you for having me.
Okay, well, thank you. Information.
So before we go to the next, next item, we should go back to the one that I skipped over. And that was approval of the minutes from the July meeting. That was the first item on the agenda and I just sort of, without looking at the agenda, I went right to other business, so. Somebody would like to?
I move approval of the July ninth, twenty, twenty-five minutes.
I'll second. Okay, now, this is tricky because we have eight of us here. Well, so I, I'm not going to vote on, like, I've been abstained since I wasn't at that meeting. So all those in favor? Any opposed? No. So it looks like it carried six to zero.
One, two, three, four, five, six. We both abstained, we weren't there, so. Five and six.
Okay, so I guess we'll move on to the next item, which is the code update. Work.
Okay, great, thank you. For the record, Fred Rollenhagen, Planning Director. The, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation prepared or anything. I think what we're going to do is just go through the code amendments. I have the code amendments up on my computer screen and I'll share them when, when this is, when, when we get to each one. It's, I just have a Word document that we can go through and discuss. But if you, if you had a chance to look at the packet, I did not have much of a memo. I just said that, that the draft code amendments are attached, free review and discussion. Just as a reminder, just as some background, we held a third working session last month that focused on answering questions. We also provided some information on potential impacts from ADUs. Very, very generally, we, we found that, that the data and spatial information that was provided showed potential locations for ADU construction and locations that would prohibit ADUs based on the LUDC current development standards. Very, very general, the data seemed to show a greater opportunity for existing buildings like garages or basements or other qualified structures to be converted into ADUs than there is available land for new structures to be constructed. And then at the end of the session, the Planning Commission asked to see a draft code revision before scheduling public hearings. So well, so this is our, so we'll be, we can go through the code revisions tonight and discuss, consider revisions, anything like that. And then with the anticipation that we'll schedule public hearings for next month, where you can consider the draft revisions and then make recommendations to city council. Okay. So there were three, so we're looking at three, three code amendments. Accessory dwelling units is one of them, and that's kind of the big one. But also with the, the other two that the state land use legislation had is compelling us to follow is House Bill twenty-four ten oh seven, which is housing occupancy limits and House Bill twenty-four thirteen oh four, which are minimum parking requirements. So let me pull up the housing occupancy limits first. Okay, I hope everybody can see this. We worked with, we worked with our attorney's office for putting these together. But there are two, basically two sections in the code that would be revised to address occupancy limits. One is the, is the top one that, that you see. And I, let me see if I can, I'll blow this up when we, when we start talking about this. But the first, the first section would be a change or an addition to, and I'm going to the heading of this here. It would be under chapter eighteen point oh two zone districts and it would be identified under the residential, identified under the residential zoning districts. We would identify an additional section, eighteen point oh two point two point five residential household size limitation, where we would say the number of persons occupying any residential dwelling unit shall not exceed the maximum number permitted by the city's building, fire, or other applicable safety codes. That should be plural code. Comma, the city's housing habitability code, applicable state or federal laws or regulations, or applicable affordable housing covenants and regulations. And this would govern, this would govern the, the household size in the residential zoning districts. Then there would be a change in the definition under eighteen point oh seven definitions, change the definition of household. And so propose to get rid of the current definition of household. And the new definition would simply be household, that a household is a single person or a group of persons living together as a single housekeeping unit. So that would be, currently, that's the draft, the draft code amendment for addressing, addressing household size and household limitations.
Excuse me, Fred, what's the definition of a housekeeping unit?
It's a good question, let me find out.
I mean, if it's not in definitions, that might be a good one to add.
It might be that we want to change that to dwelling unit, like what we have in the, throughout the code, we talk about dwelling units.
Okay, it doesn't look like that we have a definition of housekeeping unit. Let's see, do we have dwelling, let me? No, I do, no, it doesn't look like we have a definition for housekeeping unit. We have, in, in the definition for dwelling unit, a dwelling unit means a room or rooms connected together constituting an independent housekeeping unit for a family. And then there is a, there's a reference in section fifteen, the fire, it looks like amendments to the fire code, where we're talking about whenever the words dwelling unit, dwelling premises, building, rooming house, rooming unit, housecaping unit, or story are stated in this appendix, let's see what that says.
If you believe AI, a housekeeping unit in context of building and zoning regulations is generally defined as a single self-contained living space within a larger structure that includes facilities for sleeping, cooking, and sanitation. Is designed for one or more individuals and provides basic amenities for independent living.
Yeah, so with, with a housekeeping unit, usually from, from my perspective, I look at it, you know, is, is it a separate unit that's been approved as a separate unit under the building code? You know, it's one thing to say, oh, I have a separate unit on the top floor of my house, which includes two bedrooms and a bathroom. It's another, if it's actually a real separate living unit as, as per the building code, which has, which, which meets the provisions of the building code for a separate, for a separate unit, for a separate housing unit. So for example, like as a duplex, if somebody wanted to add a second unit in their single family residence and create a duplex, we would direct them, not, not only would they have to comply with our current code, but they would have to get a building permit to establish that, establish a second unit and meet all the provisions of the building code, including firewalls, appropriate ingress, egress, and things like that in order to be considered a separate, a separate unit.
Fred, I remember quite a bit of discussion on this definition of household when this was being developed. So explain to me why we're deleting that definition and replacing it with a different one, with a briefer one.
The, the reason, the reason it's being replaced is the legislation that was passed by, by the state last year prohibit, prohibits, prohibits municipalities, prohibits communities from defining household in the way that we've defined it. Usually, usually it goes back to definition of family and, and defining family as, as like a biological unit or people, persons related, living together, things like that. If you'll give me a second, I can pull that, I can pull that up.
No, that's okay, you can, it, it's just for my reading, when we have one or two, it seems to, again, fit, fit the definition in, in the new revised statute, so. And I know that there was concern over when we get to household occupancy limits, there were, the concern was a number of people living in a house that is too small for that number of people, like six, seven people in a, in a one bedroom apartment.
Currently, the building code does have, does have minimum square footage requirements per person. I don't know what the current building code says, says regarding that. But we also have some minimum square footage requirements in our, in our housing inhabitability code. And right now, I can pull those up. Let's see.
And Fred, I'm, I'm good. My, my concern is that there are places still within, within the code where if too many people are living in too small a space without sanitation services and so forth, that there, there's a way of permitting, preventing that.
Okay.
Or fining it.
In fifteen oh eight, it's housing hab, hab, habability code. It goes through all that, the safety, health, the minimum requirements.
And I just found it, I, I just pulled it up. So right now in our habitability code, that we, that we do enforce, the min, the, the, the minimum dwelling unit square footage that you must have for, for one person would be one hundred square feet. For two people, it'd be a hundred and seventy-five square feet and on down the list. And up to four hundred and seventy-five square feet for six people. And then after that, it identifies, you, you need to have at least sixty square feet for each additional person over six. If I recall, the building code requirements are actually a little bit higher than that in the, in the international building code that Pike Peak Regional Building Department enforces. Okay. If no other questions. Um, if no other questions, I will move on. See, we'll go to. For the, um, ADU regulations, there were a ser, there was a number of. Draft changes in, in a few sections, um, to encompass or capsulate, encapsulate. The, the, um. Uh, the changes that needed to be made to, number one, come into conformance with the state legislation. And make sure that, um, the appropriate rules. That we wanted applied to them were being applied. Um, and so. Um, I believe this is in, this is in the packet, uh, but we made some changes, uh. The prime, the most of the changes were made in section eighteen, which is Landis and Development Code. There were some changes that are being proposed for section thirteen, which is related to water and sewer provision. Um, we had a con, uh, Chelsea and I had a conversation with, uh, our water and sewer folks to talk about. Talk about options and the best, best way forward is, as we move, as we move forward to allowing ADUs and what they would. Want to see for, um, uh, assuring adequate connection to water and sewer. So, um, this first section that I have up on the screen right now is related to that extension. Um, or that connection with the water, with water and source, water and sewer service. W- what they had indicated are, they are comfortable with is allowing an exception for an accessory dwelling unit. Um, to have a service line, a water service line extended. Um, from the associated principal dwelling that would be on the same property. However, a- a- and they're fine with that as long as each, as long as each unit is individually metered. Um, now with that said, they, they, they had also said that the service line needs to be of a certain size. Um, in order to provide adequate, uh, water pressure and service to both, um, to both, uh, uh, buildings. And that's something that is gonna have to, would have to be determined by the water department and by the city engineer. And so that would be something that they would need to look at on a case by case basis, depending on the request by the person who's building. The accessory dwelling unit. I did get a, um, I did get a question, um, uh, Commissioner Casey, I, I got your email asking about. You know, what does that do with, um, metering and billing? Um, does that mean that the ADU, that the usage that the ADU would have would be billed twice? Once as it, as it's going into the main unit and then again, as it goes into the accessory dwelling unit? That's a good question and I put that, I, I put that. Uh, question to our, to our water department. I haven't received a response yet. Um, but I, I anticipate that we'll get a response before the public hearing next month.
I have a, I have a question about the metering. Um, I happen to have friends in Colorado Springs who've created an ADU by remodeling their basement and having their. Adult granddaughter, husband and child move in. So it's exactly what we're talking about, but they haven't separately metered that basement. So I wonder whether the metering is necessary. Kind of reminds me of when I was in college and rented various places and sometimes. I paid for utilities separately and sometimes it was included. So why couldn't it be included here?
Yeah, so to, to Mike's question, I have a separate cottage. That's coming in with the same, I can hear it running through my house. Um, and then there's a meter at the cottage, so it's separately metered. But I've been considering combining the meters because it saves a lot of money. There's a lot of non-use charges on, on a utility bill. And I wanted to put solar on one co- on the cottage to help my house because there's hardly any use in the cottage. So it would increase costs for the accessory dwelling unit, um, to require separate metering. And, uh, so I would suggest we strike that if possible.
I, I agree completely. And this says that, um. Um, not on the water side, but on the electric side. It says that. The service may, the, the power may extend the service line. Um, of the associated principal dwelling. In other words, you may come from the principal to the ADU. But it must be metered. So there's a may and a must that may or may or may not cause confusion. I, I, I mean, I think it should be up to the owner if they want it separately metered. It's just added expense.
Okay. That, uh, that was something that was specifically requested from our water department. So I'll circle back with our water department and get some clarification, um, about why they, they want. Want those separately metered.
Well, I, I, it would make sense if there was, uh, like one line coming off the street. Well.
Well, you know, we, I don't know how deep we need to go because this is outside of our purview. This is gonna be a council decision. And we can make a recommendation, but, um, title thirteen is not part of our responsibility. This is more infor- informational for us, I think.
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Um, that, that, that is, that is correct. So your recommendation would be on title, uh, section eighteen rather than sec- uh, section thirteen.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, they'll counsel rip section thirteen apart, but, you know, we can s- express our opinion. But when we have our public hearing next month, it won't include section thirteen, uh, title thirteen. It'll just be title eighteen.
But apparently the verbiage is the same on both.
I didn't think we discussed, um, metering or, or connecting in section eighteen.
All right, yeah. Moving on, you're right.
I do think it's a matter of affordable housing and accessible and, and attainable housing, though, to. Not require separate meters. So that would be something I would encourage us to convey to the council.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So let me move on to, um, section eighteen. So what we have or what we're proposing is under, um. Um, under eighteen point O four point three, which is residential uses, it identifies the various residential uses. And we would add, um, a new section eighteen point O four point three point seven accessory dwelling unit. And define what it is with, uh, and I, and identify the use standards and development standards. So defined a dwelling unit that is internal. Attached, number one, internal, two, attached, two, or three detached from a conforming single household detached unit. If attached or detached from, it is an accessory structure to the principal single household detached unit. We've identified here in this draft that an accessory dwelling unit shall not be permitted. For use as a short-term rental as defined under, under section eighteen O four point five point four, which is. Our standards for short-term rentals. We can have ma- more discussion about that. I know there was some discussion that we had last month. And then under development standards, um, identifying that ADUs shall comply with dimensional standards that are applicable to the zone district. Um, with the following exceptions, and this is to assure that we're in conformance with state law. The, uh, we, the, the exception is that, uh, first of all, one accessory dwelling unit is permitted per prin- principal dwelling unit. Per lot and shall not be subject to density restrictions stated in, uh, the applicable dimensional standards table. Um, and that, and that any, any additional units shall be subject to, to the density restrictions, the, the. When we're saying shall not be subject to the density restrictions that are stated in the table, that's that. Um, the de- the density requirements per dwelling unit. Um, that, um, that you have to have a certain amount of square footage on your lot for the number of dwelling units that you're proposing. That's something that is expressly not permitted by the state legislation, um, that was passed. We have to allow ADUs, um, on lots where single family units are permitted. Um, size requirements indicating here at least that accessory dwelling units be no less than five hundred square feet inhabitable space. And no more than seven hundred fifty square feet inhabitable space. That's the minimum that's required by state, by state law. We can allow, uh, ADUs to be bigger than seven hundred fifty square feet and we can allow ADUs to be. Smaller than five hundred square feet if, if desired. Um, and then dimensional standards applied to it shall be that of permanent principal structure found in table eighteen point O two point two. Those dimensional standards are, are setbacks, um, height restrictions, things like that. And then, so, so that's the meat. That's basically the meat of the change, of, of the changes or of the, uh, the allowance right there. Um, and then under lodging use is what we indicated for now. Is that, that what, what this change reflects is, um, not allowing ADUs to be used for short-term rentals. Um, there was some desire, and I know there's some, there, there was some, uh, desire by, by some planning commissioners to allow. Short-term rental, the short-term rental of accessory dwelling units. Where that accessory dwelling unit qualified and where it met the, where it met our standards for, for short-term rental. Um, and we can certainly do that. Um, and then, um, also in order to, to assure conformance with state law. We're identifying that the construction or alteration of an, of an ADU. Um, is reviewed as a mi- what we call a minor site plan. The minor site plan is, is an administrative. Um, uh, process. That's one of the things that the state had required. That, um, ADUs be reviewed on, as an administrative review rather than a re- rather than being reviewed. Um, by the planning commission or city council through a public hearing process. And those are, those are the proposed changes at, at this time.
Fred, as far as, uh, dimensional standards go. May we still enforce lot coverage expectations? Like if, if the lot is already, you know, it's a tiny lot. And, um.
Yeah, to maintain that, yeah, the certain, or, yeah, the minimum lot cover, or, uh, sorry. Yeah.
The maximum lot coverage. So, so if, if it's already eighty percent. Covered. It, we would have the right to not allow another twenty percent for an ADU.
Yes, that. Yes, that's correct. And, and our understanding, I've, I've talked with our, with our attorney that, that. We're able to enforce that. We're just not able to enforce the, the dimensional, the square footage, minimum square footage requirements. Per, per dwelling unit.
Well, on that note. I would suggest or recommend whatever, um, keeping the minimum size and striking the max. Cause. Right? If somebody wanted to build an eight hundred square foot unit and it, they had the land to do it. What's the difference?
I think we should also make the minimum lower. I mean, if somebody wants to convert their garage, it's a historic building, the garage is gonna be one car. But you could still fit a, a studio in a one-car garage.
Right, Fred just said the m- minimum allowable for one person was four fifty.
Okay, and here we have five hundred, so we should at least allow. Four fifty.
Yeah, that's right. So, so what we can do is we can reduce that. We can reduce the minimum required to something less than five hundred. We could reduce it to two hundred square feet. If, if you, if, if we wanted to. That, and that's the minimum square footage of an ADU that we would allow.
Isn't there, di- di- didn't you mention earlier that one, a one-person unit is considered to be a hundred square feet is what's allowed currently? To. Uh, for a, for a dwelling unit.
Correct, that's correct. That's the bare minimum that's in our habitability code. Yes.
Couldn't we just refer to the habitability code rather than? Adding more requirements?
You could refer to, yeah, you could re- or you could, if you wanted to, you could refer to, yeah, the applicable building code. And I would recommend applicable building code and habitability code. Um, cause the building code would, would kick in and, and have a, uh, re- require a certain minimum. So yes, you could, we could do that.
So we don't need minimums or maximums?
Um, no, not the, the, the state is not requiring a minimum or maximum. They're just saying it must be, we have to allow at least. Five hundred square, between five hundred square feet and seven hundred fifty. If we wanna go more than that on either side, we, we can.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying on this, on, on, uh. What we're proposing. Is unnecessary, the verbiage.
Well, let's, uh, discuss it. I mean, uh, what's the consensus? Is that what everybody wants? I mean, this is what kind of roadmap of what councils started with, with their emergency ordinance and. What, what does everybody think? Like, let's go around just to.
Uh, I would agree with Mike. I, I don't see having minimums or maximums where they're not necessary. If, especially if they're covered under the habitability code or the building code.
Well, I'm looking at title fifteen point O eight, the habitability code, and I, I can see smaller being, um. Necessary and, and making this more, uh, likely for residents to be able to do that. Um, one hundred square feet for one person. I don't know that ten, ten by ten, that seems pretty darn small. So that, that seems a little small to me and, um. So I, I would, I would think more al- al- along the lines of two hundred and fifty square, square feet. And I don't know about, um, uh, the maximum. I, I, I agree that that makes more sense to, to have that related to how much, uh, lot size is available. But I don't see how you can get, um, maybe the rest of you know, how, how you could get, um. Accessory dwelling unit at a hundred square feet that would still have kitchen area, bathroom area. It may be possible. I just don't, it seems too small to me.
I think we should strike it, keep it simple, make it flexible for our residents.
And I, I would agree. I'd say less is more here and we should refer to other parts of the code that address these more accurately.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that as well.
My only question on the, I agree, removing the minimums, but i- is there, is there a provision that you could put in there that would? That the ADU could not be larger? Would there be a reason why we would want to s- not allow? A five thousand square foot ADU on a, on a property that has a hundred square foot of current residence? That's the, that's the, you know, the, the difference there.
Yeah, that, that's one thing to think about with Matt, with, um, with, with on the upper end. Number of communities ha- have. Indicated in order. For an accessory dwelling unit to be, to remain accessory, that it be no larger than the main dwelling unit. Um, and so I've seen a number of communities that do that, uh, you could do that, or say it needs to be at least smaller than the main dwelling unit. Um, you, again, you, we don't have to, we can, we, we, we don't need any, any size limitation at all. Um, but that's, um, if, if it is to be considered accessory to the main dwelling unit. Um, that's. That, that's one way to do that, is to say, you know, no bigger than the main house. Unless, of course, the main house is less than seven hundred squi- si- seven hundred fifty square feet. Then we have to allow at least uh, seven hundred fifty square feet by state law.
Okay, I guess I'm the minority, I, I. Don't see a problem with having a max and. The strike point of seven hundred and fifty doesn't seem unreasonable. But we'll, we'll go with the. The majority is saying, let's, you know, somehow we should reference. Minimum standards in our, you know, habitability code or so- somehow. Put that in there.
Okay, so what I'll do, um, what we'll do is, is um. Uh, change this to reflect uh, no specific minimum. Uh, minimum square footage, except that it, it needs to meet our. Minimum provisions of the building code and habitability code and everything like that. And what I'm, what I'm hearing is ri- right now, no, no maximum either.
You're hearing that from seven of the eight people here.
Okay, very good.
I would support not larger than the original unit if, if folks want.
I, I think that it, limiting it to make it an ADU, it, you'd have to limit that to the size of the current structure.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that change, I'll reflect that for your consideration.
So, so would someone be allowed to build that, but they just couldn't call it an ADU? It would then become the main property?
Yeah, so i- i- if, if some, well, that's a good question, yes, so if somebody wanted, um. If somebody came into the office and said, I want to build an ADU. By the way, the ADU is seven thousand square feet. It, it's possible that maybe an existing residence would qualify as an ADU. Um, and we could, I mean, that's possible, we could do that. Um, and somebody might wanna build a primer, uh, build a new residence which could be considered their primary residence. And then the existing residence would be considered their ADU by, by definition and by, by the code. Um, I, I can see that happening.
That means that it doesn't matter if we say it can't be larger. Cause it's different, like the designation would just flip, so I, maybe I retract my. If it's pointless, why confuse things?
Yeah, I think this is probably something that the city attorney will weigh in on when it, when this comes to council. Cause I don't think they're gonna swallow this at all, that you can turn a. Main dwelling into a accessory dwelling, I just don't, I don't think that's where it's gonna go, but. We can leave it to the city attorney, I think, on that.
Okay, these are some good questions, and I'll clarify, I'll have a discussion wi- wi- with our, with our attorney and, and make sure we get this. Uh, sorted out and that we understand what the alternatives are for these things, uh, when I, when we bring this to you next month.
And Fred, just as a suggestion for on the verbiage, maybe say something for minimum and maximum. Building ADU square footage, see.
Thank you.
And um, I'm looking at notes from uh, last month's meeting on House Bill eleven fifty-two, and there's some language in there. That Ashley may, um, may not help us. The size of the ADU may be limited to being no larger than the size of the main residence or seven hundred and fifty square feet. Whichever is less. So there may be some conflicting verbiage in the legislation that is gonna be problematic.
Yeah, I, I think we're taking a leap here that's gonna really get pushed back from. You know, all the. Like our code update committee, what council did when they adopted the new land use and development code. It was pretty clear, then there was a lot of reluctance to have any ADUs. So, you know, we can have our proposal be whatever, but just. You know, be prepared to be disappointed.
Okay.
Yes, we have to allow them, but to allow a three thousand square foot ADU is. I, I, you know, I would be shocked if you would get three votes on council for that.
Okay, um. And, and as I said, as I said before, I know there, 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 I got some mixed reaction. Or we get, where we, we had some mixed reaction last month about whether to allow ADUs as short-term rentals or not. Open to discussion with that right now, but um, th- right now. Um, what we have in the draft in front of you is, is a prohibition or, or not, not allowing ADUs as short-term rentals.
And again, I would urge us to strike that because I do not think it's fair to. Residents to restrict how they can use their property when there are two units on the property.
Well, we have a short-term rental ordinance already that was the consensus of the community that. We wanted to limit them, and the whole agenda here is to create more housing. For, you know, you know, for people, you know, more residents, not for more. Visitors, that was the whole idea, and, and there's been a lot of discussion about. The notion that we're already with, i- if we were to have a lot of build out of ADUs, that's adding a lot of. Stress to our infrastructure. And um, I think that. All this stuff sort of, you know, that, this is mandated on us by the state, and I, I think um. We're kind of, it's kind of productive to say, oh yeah, let's, you know, let's everybody do an ADU and then we'll have a short-term rental. Pardon?
I'm, I'm not saying we should, I think we have an excellent um, short-term rental code, and I think we should stick to that. And this should have no bearing on whether or not you can have a short-term rental or not. You have to comply with the code that we have.
Yeah, okay.
I think provides accurate and effective limitations.
Well, i- in any case, I, I think it, it's probably on the margins, you know. That right now with the five hundred foot separation, there's like five places left in town where you could even have an ADU. I mean, I mean, have a short-term rental, but.
Well, I, I agree with Megan, and, and on that, what you, your, your point is very valid, of course, but um, we have. A short-term rental ordinance that will control the situation. So it's, it's just not necessary, it's, it's redundant, plus, you know, if, if I owned. One of the five properties that was actually outside of the circles, and I wanted to build a second. Building, I should be able to do it, anything I want with it.
That's one view of the world.
It's what?
That's, that's your view of the world, I, I can see that, and so I, I guess it's, you know. Again, let's, what's the consensus? We, we can, we can save some time, like if, you know. Four of us think that that's the way to go, then let's strike that, and then we'll let council do what they want with it, when it gets to them.
I brought this up last, uh, last meeting.
Get, you know, we want this on the record, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I brought this up last month, that it's, seems unnecessary, we're very well protected. By our current um, uh, ADU laws, not only the five hundred uh, foot limit. But also the, is it two percent of housing in Manitou? I, I think that really limits it quite well.
I'm in favor of uh, leaving the um, additional language that, that is in here. I think if you want to have a short-term rental, you should apply for short-term rental, and I think the idea. The spirit of this law is really to have more long-term housing and not more short-term housing.
I, I would agree, what was said earlier about um, striking it from this, I think it unnecessarily conflates the two objectives here. It, this is about ADUs, not about short-term rentals, I think we're, as it was mentioned, we're adequately protected by our short-term rental ord- ordinance. And I'd also add, this might be a question for the city attorney, the way it's written right now in the proposed language, it might open us up to some risk. If Fred, I heard you say earlier that state law requires use by right, anywhere we permit a. Single-family home to be able to have an ADU. So I can imagine a scenario where someone has a short-term rental right now in a single-family home. If we enact this on day one, are they per se unable to have an ADU because of our ordinance? And would that violate state law, if that makes sense?
Yeah, that is, uh, that, that's a good question, I'd wanna talk with our attorney for clarification on that, yes.
You know, just, you know, historically, we've changed this short-term rental law several times. And we've always, always grandfathered in existing units, so I don't see how it would be any different this time.
Well, here though, you already have an existing use, they have a short-term rental, and then you're saying, oh, by the way. State law says you could have an ADU, but Manitou's saying you can't because you have a short-term rental. So you'd have to get rid of your short-term rental in order to build an ADU, even though the state said that. Because you have a single-family home, we have to allow an ADU on that property. Manitou's coming in and saying, no, you have a short-term rental, you're actually not allowed to have an ADU now. Does that make sense? That's how I'm seeing it at least, the way it's written here.
Okay, you're saying that if. Okay, that if you have a short-term rental, that your house is a short-term rental, and now you wanna have an ADU.
Yeah, because even if your house is a short-term rental, it's also a single-family home perhaps, and so.
Okay, I get it, I get it, yeah, that's a good attorney question, but.
And, and I mean, I have another example, which is I live in a single-family detached home. I have a cottage that's been there since nineteen twenty-five, and it's a, currently a long-term rental. Under this code, it would automatically become an accessory dwelling unit. And so in, I would never ever be able to use it as a short-term rental, even if I could comply with all the provisions of the short-term rental code. And I think that's an unfair restriction of my property and my existing ADU.
Okay, I think it's, it's pretty clear uh, where we're going on this, so I guess we'll strike that. Anything to do with short-term rentals.
Very good, thank you.
And that, that's good, cause that cleans up one place where I, there was a typo that I didn't like.
Yeah. Okay, um, so that's what we have for ADUs at this time. Let me stop sharing, I'll go on to the next. Or the last section.
Just one thing, Fred, on the definition of ADUs here. It's much more condensed than in the law that we're referring to, the law. Uh, just has another couple of lines that are specified. I've got a copy of it here. It says that um, an ADU includes facilities for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. And it seems to me that should be included in your definition, to comply with the law, have the same de- definition.
Okay, good point, thank you, um.
It's just adding a couple of lines, but then they'd be identical.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, then next. Okay, and to address the um. Uh, the uh, I guess transit area, transit service area exceptions. Um, what, what we're proposing in order to comply with this state law is um. To add a section in mobility requirements of the, of the L U D C. So the mobility requirements, the purpose of that particular subsection is to. Ensure uh, accommodation and, and functional access and promote flexibility for varying modes of transit and. In uh, proportion to the generalized demand of different land uses. And so what this, I, what this section does, it, it re- is it requires new development to provide off-street parking. And loading areas in accordance with this section, um, uh, depending on what the new development is. And so under this section, we would provide an exception for. Um, that, excuse me, those areas that would fall under the state's description of a transit service area. And if you recall, the uh, the state put together, the state uh, provided a map. Um, that, that defines the transit service area that is in Manitou Springs, and that's essentially, it looks like a buffer area along. The transit line, along our, the, our, uh, the two bus lines, along Manitou Avenue and El Paso. As it goes up to, uh, and as it leads up to uh, Ruxton. Um, the, there, there's an area around those tr- those transit lines that would, that would fall under this transit service area. And um, indicated that this area is exempt from the minimum parking requirements. Um, and that is for specific types of development in this transit service area, one is multifamily residential development. Number two is adapt, what, what we call, or what the state calls adaptive reuse. Um, which is the conversion of an existing structure from the use for which it was constructed to a new use. By maintaining elements of the structure and adapting such elements. Um, and then number three, uh, for adaptive reuse, and that's, that includes at least. Fifty percent of the use would be for residential purposes. One thing that, a- and so, so we, so uh, what, what we have in the draft is that exception. Um, there is an exception to the exception. Um, in, under certain circumstances, we could require up to one parking space. One off-street parking space per unit. Um, if, if certain things exist. Um, and that is uh. Um, that's if, is if, one, if the housing development project is intended to contain twenty, twenty units or more. Um, or contain reg- uh, regulated affordable housing. And that the city has published written findings and filed an annual report with the Department of Local Affairs. Showing that not enforcing minimum, uh, minimum parking requirements, I'm sorry, that was a typo. Minimum parking requirements will have a substantial negative impact that cannot be mitigated by other strategies. As required by Colorado revised statutes. Um, in those cases, if those things exist, then the city could require up to uh, uh. Up to one space per dwelling unit. So it's, it's a little bit complicated, and we have to, we have to provide written findings to the state. As to why we need to require up to one parking space per dwelling unit. Um, but that carve-out, that exception to the exception is in here, and so that would give us the ability to at least. And so that would give us the ability to at least attempt to make those, attempt to make those findings if we thought that off-street parking was required.
So just, just a question on the, I had a question from a neighbor that, that asked me about their existing property, and if, if they had room to build, and I think this goes back to how many units is considered multifamily? So they, they have a business, they're looking, okay, maybe I, maybe they could put in a, a duplex, or maybe a fourplex. And the question becomes there, would, would a duplex require parking spaces? Or would a, would a fourplex require parking spaces? And, and, and what number does the multifamily kick in?
Um, I thought it was two. Two or more. I can clarify that. I thought it was two or more.
But this section only has to do with the, the transit service area exceptions, right?
Correct.
So that would be different than other areas having to do with zoning?
That's correct. What this is, think of this as an overlay, an overlay of the transit service area. And that is the area that parking minimums would not apply.
A simpler revision would just be to strike our parking minimum.
Alan, do you, I ask you a question about another section related?
Sure.
Okay. And if, if it needs to be a separate discussion, let me know. I'm wondering how, number one, under C, impacts the URA? And if you want to, as a representative of them, give us some background on that?
Could you speak up, get closer to the mic and speak up, I can't, I really can't hear you.
I was wondering, under section C1, the multifamily residential development as the URA is on a transit line, how might that impact the development in that area? It, it, it sounds like this might override some of the decisions that have been made on density and setbacks and so forth.
Yeah, I, I don't, I thought this one was mostly about parking, not density, minimal parking standards, and it would impact that, I would think.
Yeah, so for, for example, I mean, let, let's, let's take the, the LaFonne property. With this requirement, density standards would still apply, height standards, everything like that, to a, to a proposed development in, on the LaFonne site. What this would do is it would restrict us from imposing minimum parking requirements on the property. And so it would basically allow the developer to build as much or as little parking as, as the developer would, would wish.
And that's because it's in the transit service area?
That's correct.
Is that transit service area only defined by the state?
Yes. And again, to, to Commissioner Day's point, the, the, the state is, is imposing this as a minimum requirement. It's not, it's, it's, it's not keeping the community from, from reducing or eliminating parking minimums anywhere else, that's, that's entirely up to us.
Yeah, so it, it looks like a, a small multi-household shall mean one lot containing between three and eight dwelling units. And large is more than eight. So a duplex would not be multi.
Where, uh, where do you see that?
It's 1804 dot 3 dot 5.
I will clarify that and make sure that we're in conformance with, with state law from that respect.
Yeah, that could be another thing that they redefined what multi-household is.
Okay, those are the, those are the draft changes. Any other, any other comment, any other discussion, questions?
So it's, yes, you've pretty, you've got the consensus of the commission, so you can, we can start from that.
Sounds good, we'll do that. So got the consensus, I understand generally, generally what we're, what you're, you're looking for. So I'll, unless I hear any opposition, I'll go, we'll go ahead and, and schedule a public hearing for the September meeting?
Yeah.
And get this on the docket.
Yeah, the only other thing I would like, if we could figure out a way to do it, is in, in that transit service area exceptions section, I find it awkward to have one, two, three, and then one, two, all under the same C grouping. Maybe there's some other nomenclature, small caps or letters or some, you know.
Yeah, that is confusing, and we'll, yes, we'll look at a way to, to massage that, so it, so it reads better.
I would, just noticing on some of the Housing Advisory Board notes, ADUs as a separate structure must conform to the look and feel of the neighborhood exterior design, just as one of their recommendations. Do with it what you may.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I, I, I read that, too. One thing that I, I'm concerned about is, is the, the state statute does not allow, I guess, more or less subjective material to evaluate, subjective guidelines to evaluate an ADU on, has to be very objective criteria. So if you're looking at the general character of neighborhood or general character or feel, that we have to be careful with that.
I, I, I think they're trying to avoid a very large tough shed on destruction.
Okay, fair, yes, fair enough. As I said before, we can, we, we, we are allowed to apply our historic district guidelines, and so nothing in this, in these change. The, the, these proposed draft revisions keeps our ability to apply historic district guidelines to an ADU when an ADU is being proposed in the historic district.
Okay, so are we done with this, then? You got everything? Okay, do we have any other notice of council action or any other updates?
No, I don't believe so. I'm nothing, so I don't know if you, the, um, sorry, let me collect my thoughts. So the city council's been hearing information on the development or redevelopment of Hiawatha Gardens, the Hiawatha Gardens property, for a mobility center, parking and mobility center. That's gonna require some land use review by the planning commission. In particular, rezoning and subdivision application to, to clean up the zoning and to clean up the property lines. So we'll be, we're planning on scheduling that for next month, I believe. But that's something that city council has been advising staff on in terms of the design, design of the property and everything like that.
Hey, thanks. Does anybody have anything else? Uh, Megan?
Yeah, we didn't go over the table of uses, allowed uses.
Sorry, say that again.
There, in the packet, there was a table of allowed uses, which added accessory dwelling unit.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that. Yes, in addition, yeah, in addition to the, to the, to the text changes that we talked about today, we're adding ADUs in the, in the table of allowed uses, let me pull that up.
And I am wondering why we can't also add ADUs as allowed in high-density residential, downtown, commercial, and mixed use?
Oh, sure. Yeah, so currently, currently, in, in order to conform with, with state law, we must allow ADUs where single-family, single-family dwellings are allowed. So that's what we did with that table of allowed uses. There's nothing keeping us from allowing ADUs in other zoning districts. If we want to do that, we can. One thing that the other, that the other zoning districts do allow is multifamily uses. So it may be a little bit difficult. What we would have to do is find a way to define or distinguish the difference between an ADU and, and multiple units or multiple residential units in some of those other zoning districts. We can do that. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure what that would, that would look yet, but, but we can do that. But you're correct, right now, the table of allowed uses identifies ADUs as allowed only in those zoning districts where single-family units are currently permitted.
Okay. Mike?
Fred, just on an administrative question, and I feel like I ask this question every two or three years, but does the planning department encourage or discourage emails prior to a meeting? Like questions on the agenda or questions on the application?
Yeah, that's a good question. If I receive, if staff receives emails from individual planning commissioners, we will disclose that information if it's pertaining to a public hearing and try to address those questions at the hearing and make sure that all, all commissioners, all planning commissioners have that same information. Sometimes it's good to, for us to have a heads-up of, of questions that are coming, that are coming, but definitely not necessary.
So that's a maybe?
That's, that's a maybe. If, if, if you, if you really want to bring something to us, I'll, I will accept it and, and I will, I will take it into consideration and be prepared to discuss that item at the, during the hearing.
Okay.
I, I think in, in past, other planning department staff have felt like, if we know something, if we give a heads-up, then staff can be prepared to answer the question, and then it's shared with everybody. But I, I'll admit to doing that, just as a kindness, so that, you know, it's, you know, we don't have our staff left flat-footed. It's not like I'm trying to mold the conversation, it's just like, hey, I think there's a typo here, or this is, really doesn't make sense, and I'm going to ask questions to clarify this particular item. I think that's a polite thing to do for staff, just, we don't talk about it with each other.
Sounds like a firm maybe.
I, I, I would say it's at, it's at, if you, if, if you want, if you want to ask questions, or if you want to give me a heads-up on something, please do. So let me, if, it does help that clarifies.
Okay, we had enough, let's adjourn.